Okay, we're good to go.
All right, thank you, Joe. I'm sorry, I'll begin again. This is John Gregg, Mayor of the town of Seabrook Island. We're convening for a special call meeting of the town council to take up the replacement of emergency ordinance 2020-05. We have a draft proposed ordinance 2020-06 that we will be considering during this meeting. I ask that anyone that would join this conference call to please put their phones on mute so that whatever they may say and any background noises at their location will not interfere with the ability of other persons on the call to hear the proceedings. We will have the volume on our end turned down so we will not hear anything from anyone else who's on the conference call. And with that, I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that the town clerk confirm that notice of this meeting has been duly posted and that the other requirements of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act have been satisfied.
It has.
Thank you for that. We have one item on the agenda for our special call meeting that is, as I indicated, for persons on the conference call. The consideration of a proposed emergency ordinance 2020-06. This is an emergency ordinance to modify and extend the requirement relating to the wearing of these coverings at all business establishments within the town. Modify the requirements for certain businesses, to extend requirements related to social distancing in group congregations, to extend emergency provisions related to town meetings, to extend the prohibition on temporary use permits, to extend the expiration date for active building permits and other matters related thereto. All members of council should have received a copy of both a marked text version and a clear text version proposed emergency ordinance 2020-06. If anyone did not receive it, I believe we do have the, both versions available as electronic files that you can access from an email that was sent out by Joe. At this point, I will call for a motion for approval of the, of emergency ordinance 2020-06. As presented. Is there a second?
So, I'm going to second and then we open it up for discussion, right?
That's correct.
Okay, second.
And now I will begin. I think, Joe, with Pat on our Zoom call, that it may be appropriate to skip forward into the substance of our discussion to address the continuation of the existing prohibition on issuance of temporary use permits. Do you think that's appropriate?
Yeah, however you would prefer to do it is fine.
So I would like to take that up. We have also been provided the temporary use permit application that has been submitted for the Kiowa Seabrook Exchange Club 5K and half marathon events which are scheduled for, I believe that was November 21st, 2020. All members of council should have received a copy of the application. Does everyone have that application?
Yes.
Very good. I acknowledge that the application has extensive description of precautions that are being taken with respect to the conduct of the two races, the 5K and a half marathon. And the, really the only question I have concerning the event is, is there any estimate, I believe the estimate was that there would be about 150 participants. But I wonder whether there's any estimate of the number of people that might be expected to attend at the start and/or finish of the race. Pat, do you have anything to contribute in that regard?
Well, you know, we've done this thing for quite, quite a number of years and I guess one of the, the only complaint we ever get is that there's not any spectators on the course. Generally, if you run in a big run like a Turkey Day or Marine Corps Marathon, you know, you got as many spectators as you do runners. But being that Seabrook's a private island and Bohiga doesn't lend itself well to spectators being on the sidelines. Generally, the, the people that we will have at the run, I would say 95% of them are runners and the rest of them are volunteers. So, and, and we have about a 30/70 split. We'll have about 30% of the participants will run to 5K, which is simply an in and out of the island and the half marathon is the same course that we've had in the past where they'll go down by the beach club, they make one great big circle through the island and back out. I would say that probably we could end up with 170 and a half and maybe 80 or 90 in the, in the 5K. And, and as I put in the protocols, you know, we, we're going to practice safety from the time they step out of the car. We will have temperature guns in the hands of our volunteers at the parking lots. So if anyone's temperature is at any indication that they may have a fever, they'll be stopped at the parking lot and given an email address where they can request the refund or deferment till next year. So there should be no intermingling of anyone, even if they have a chance of having the virus. We have, the, the road is going to be divided. Now, if I get too much into weeds with the details, please stop me.
Well, Pat, you know, I appreciate the description of the various protocols for conduct of the race from start to finish. I know that you have laid out how you will do the testing and the wearing of wristbands and so forth. And I know that there's, for purposes of starting, you've defined a starting, I'll call it a grid so that the participants, you'll do groups of participants and in each group, participants in whichever event it is will be spaced from others by six feet.
Correct.
I think that's essentially six feet in all directions, but in any case, what I was really trying to understand better, I have not attended these in the past. I know nothing about how the races are conducted other than what I've seen in, in the material you presented, but I'm, I'm really more interested in knowing what magnitude of crowd is attracted for the start and the finish that may be at the marina who are people who are not participants.
I, I would say very minimal. Very, very few people will drive down just to observe. You may have a husband-wife that comes down and the husband runs the 5K and the wife runs the half marathon and vice versa. But I experienced over the last eight or 10 years is that we have very, very few observers. You know, the observers are generally the volunteers and the Charleston Running Club members and perhaps some of the merchants when, if they come in before the race is over. But it doesn't draw a large crowds. It, it just, this event, if it were held in Charleston, it possibly would, but the distance of driving to Kiowa and Seabrook is just too far. So we have very, the answer to your question is, the people at the marina will be the runners and volunteers.
All right, I appreciate that, Pat. And what I would like to do now is allow the other members of council to ask any questions they may have for Pat. The, the point of this exercise is that the proposed ordinance, as I, I think I already stated, will continue the prohibition on issuance of temporary use permits. And the result of that would be that, at least is my understanding, that the, the pending temporary use permit for this event had not been approved. If it had been approved, then that would have been revoked, that approval would have been revoked under our former emergency ordinance. But under my understanding that it has not been approved, then the continuation of the prohibition on issuance of temporary use permits will mean that this application will be denied. And I think, and we don't want to take up Pat's entire day while we decide what we want to do about it, but I want to give all the members of council an opportunity to make. So Skip, I'm going to try to go alphabetically and I know I've, I know I've gotten this wrong recently. But Skip, I still think you would be the first in line alphabetically speaking.
I think so. I have a few questions for Pat that are basically number or data in, in in meaning, I guess. How many, how many runners do you anticipate total in the day?
Last year, we had 313.
Okay. I, I think that's to me a big determinant with the, if I read through the permit about the plan for refreshments afterward.
Yeah, and as far as in the past, we have, have you ever been to the run afterwards?
I have not.
We, we, we put out banquet tables in the square, in the patio where the flagpole is and, and, and it was almost like a buffet. They would just come by and pick up a banana, pick up an orange or a, a whatever drink that they were going to have. And they would sit at the tables that the marina has and at the tables that the Salty Dog has and the benches on the boardwalk. And that, what we're trying to do is say, no, we don't even want that interjection. We'll have double tables with all pre-wrapped food. In other words, generally when they finish, runners are looking for Gatorade and maybe an energy bar or banana or something like that. So we will have raw food. There'll be double tables so that our volunteers and staff at the marina will be six foot from anyone on the other side of the double tables. And the participants will finish the race and they'll walk through to the patio, get their Gatorade or get their banana and continue walking. They go back to their car, they can go down to boardwalk, but there will be no congregation of, of people in one central place. And
How many, how many people do you anticipate being, getting their post-race food, whatever it might be, at one time? My, my whole concern on this line of, of questioning is relative to social distancing and making sure we can maintain that.
Absolutely. One good thing is we do have two runs. So the 5K run generally is over anywhere from the very fast runners finishing in about 15 minutes and the very slow ones finishing in about 45 minutes. The fastest half marathon runner will be an hour and 20 minutes, hour and 30 minutes. So the 5K runners will go out, come back and be finished and, and virtually gone before the half marathon, half marathon runners come back to the marina. So by virtue of that happening, we've gotten rid of 30 to 40% of the participants. We've segregated them out and got them out of the way before the others come in. So
You think you're straggling out the finishers sufficiently that the after food is not going to turn into a social event, so it's
No, and we will have staff and volunteers from the running club to stop that. And the nice thing about the half marathon is, I don't know if you've observed them on the island, but we have all ages, shapes and sizes. And the fast ones are in and out and the slow ones, you know, we give them until I think 11 to be off the island. And I think some of them pushed that, you know, pushed that time cutoff. So they, they'll be trailing into the marina.
That's a, a good segue into my next question or two. I think I read in the application that the groups and there are 50 runners in each grouping. Is that right?
Yeah, and you're
How do we determine who is in? I'm sorry. How do we determine who is in what corral? And the reason I'm asking that is, I don't want, are slower participants, participants that take longer to complete this particular race, whichever one it might be, are they mixed in with those that are likely to finish in, in the top time category? And therefore there might be some kind of overlap of, of people out there, tougher spacing while the race is happening itself.
Right. Now, the instruction will be, and, and one of the things, if, if someone were to come into Pride Aiers and run the fastest race in the state, then they would, they would get, they could break a state record. But this, unbelievably, the official times must be a gun time. You would think that the official times would be the chip time because they're exact, but it's not. And so the faster runners will be in the first corral out up front and we're going to, and, and you know, we pretty much know the faster runners because when, when they submit their application, 75% of them are known to the, the running community. And, and I've already had discussions with a half a dozen of them. They're concerned that they can't go by gun time, that they're going by chip time. But what will happen is those faster runners will be in the first corral.
So it does use a handicapping system if you want to use it that way? Okay, that's good. I think that's all I have, Pat.
All right, thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Skip. Jerry, I'm, I'm going to try again to follow alphabetical order. So as near as I can tell, that would be your next.
Okay, I have a couple, three questions and comments. I've spent a lot of time on the CDC, DHEC and NIH sites the last couple of days. And I will say, I was, I understand why gators are being handed out in their bags instead of masks. But you know, I will comment that, like the CDC site says, the effectiveness of gators is still under consideration and research about how effective they are because they fit so loosely. So I was kind of disappointed that it was a gator and not a mask. But I understand being able to pull it up and down while you're running. So I will make that comment. My second thing is, I think you did a really good job of, of planning this out for safety. But my question is, or I guess observation is, people are so nonchalant about this. You guys could have all the rules and these procedures set out, but are the runners going to follow them? And so how do we enforce to make sure when they're in the crowd before they're running that they have those gators pulled up? Are their masks on? I mean, do we need to plan ahead and have an enforcement officer there, Joe? I mean, my problem is we say, go ahead with this and oh, here's all this great planning, but nobody has their mask on.
They, Jerry, they, they won't be allowed in the corral without the gator and/or the mask. They will not be allowed basically to participate and the, the running club will have probably 15 to 20 volunteers. We'll have eight or 10 marina employees. We'll have a Charleston County Police Officer that we always have. And we'll have some medical personnel, but no one will be allowed in the corral without a mask and/or the gator. The reason I, I chose a gator, now we will have, I don't know if I put it in my protocols, we will have hand sanitizers and masks everywhere. We'll have it to pack, pack and pick up. We'll have them right beside the corrals before they start. And the reason I chose the gator is because
I know you can pull it up and down real easy.
Yeah, and, and I was afraid that if they had the mask, as soon as they got on Seabrook, they'd be pulling the mask off and throwing it, you know, on the side of the road. And if they want to wear a mask, we're certainly not going to prevent that. But they will have to have the gator around their neck to get in that corral. And if they don't, we will, we will pull them out. You know, good thing is you guys control Seabrook and we could control, and we control the marina. And it's private property, both places basically. And, and we have every right to ask officers to remove somebody. But yeah, I know the running community and we're just not going to have that. These are very well disciplined people.
Okay, and I guess my other comment is, would you go back to handing out this food? Because under the governor's directive, you can't have a cafeteria buffet style. The staff has to actually hand the food. So is that how you plan on doing it? There'll be staff person there to hand them the banana or so people are
Yes, we, because I, at first we were going to allow them to pick it up and I said, well, somebody comes and picks up a banana and decides I want a banana, he wants a, a energy bar. And they put the banana down and pick up the energy bar. And so what we'll do is we'll have staff and the food on one table and it'll be then a blank table on the other side. And they'll point or request what they want. And our staff will have gloves on, they'll have masks or gators on and they'll hand it to the participant. They changed it, they can discard it, but they can't bring it back.
Okay, I mean, that is what you have to do under the governor's directive. So I just verify that. That's all I had to ask or comment on.
Thank you, Jerry. Pat, I'm, I'm still trying to follow alphabetically. So you are next.
Pat, I think you did, you and your group did an excellent job of putting together these safety measures and this proposal. And I think my question, my questions have been addressed already by the questions that came earlier. So I just commend you on doing a very good job of organizing this.
Thank you. Well, we want it, we want it to be safe and we want, you know, we have, we send out a Survey Monkey after the race each year. And Bohiga is one of the highest rated races that, you know, people rave about Seabrook and the, and the surroundings. I mean, you just can't beat it. And so we generally give them more than they ask for.
Very good. Thank you. And Barry, alphabetically, it's to you now.
So I read the protocols. I think they're, they're well-written. I think you've got a good understanding of what you need to do. So I guess really the burden just falls on you to make sure you have enough volunteers and enough people that are going to enforce all of your protocols and you should be, should be good. I, I think it's just a matter now of making sure that people follow the protocols, which would be up to you guys to make sure that happens.
Well, we, I can guarantee you we will. We, the South Carolina Commerce Department and DHEC have approved 21 different runs in Charleston, in South Carolina between August and December. And, and I think, well, I know from what I've read, I've read each one of the applications. We have more protocols in place to control the crowd and, and make sure that it is safe than, than any of the other 20. You know, that governor's executive order, it says that some of the exceptions are that people engage in strenuous exercise. And I think, I think that's definitely what we're doing. They do have a, what they call a cocoa cup run up in, in, up by highways, it's, it's up by 26 and Highway 17A and, and they've got 2,000 participants. And I shudder to think that they would try to control that. And then they got another one about two weeks later that Thanksgiving Day just got 800 participants. And they don't have anywhere near the protocols that, that we have. So I, I can assure you that we're not going to embarrass the town. And you know, this is one of the largest events for the Exchange Club and the, and the, and the foundation. You know, we, we're just at our core, we want to have the best run that, that, that we can have and we want a reputation of having a run that was totally safe.
All right, thank you, Pat. Joe, do you have any questions for Pat?
The, have you talked with anyone at Kiowa? I believe they had canceled their race in December.
Yeah, they, they do it, but I think they're doing a virtual.
Do you know what contributed to the decision not to hold it?
I just don't, I don't know because I haven't talked to them, but I think one of the problems is that, that is the crowd. They have several thousand people and controlling that crowd. And I've ran that race before. And it's, you know, we've, we've got a, a situation where we, we can control people. We, we've got them in, in one marina, in the roads and you know, Kiowa is kind of more spread out, especially at the end. They're all over that island and, and Nighthair and wherever it ends up this year. Well, would have ended up this year. I would guess it's troll feature.
One, one other question is this race will be taking place at a location where other business will be conducted. So customers coming and going. Will you, you have a, a pretty extensive list of protocols for those participating in the race. What about keeping people who are going to patronize any of the other businesses at the marina while this event is taking place?
In the past, most people are gone before the shops opened. And, and, and each individual shop is required to follow Seabrook's requirements for social distancing, masks, and, and all that will still be in place. So if there's a dozen people lingering after the race is completely over, we've cleaned up, we're gone, they still would be under the same requirements as if they would be today if they went to Bohiga Marina. Any shop that they went in, they would have to have the mask and they'd maintain the social distancing. And so I, I don't, we've never had an issue with the merchants and, and their customers because we start way before they open and, and 80% of what we do is gone before they turn the first door lock open.
That was all I had.
All right, thank you, Joe. Joe, what I, I would draw, the conclusion I would draw is there is at least interest from members of council in allowing this event to go forward. So that we would need to accommodate approval of the application under this emergency ordinance. And of course, the, the emergency ordinance as prepared essentially extends the current prohibition on issuance of temporary use permits. So what I'm getting to is what would you propose to allow council to permit this event to proceed?
I think you'd have to amend a couple of sections. One of them would be Section 7. Can you see that on the screen?
Well, we're not at section seven. I do see the, I, I see the ordinance on the screen. Now you're at it, but you have to go down one page more.
Under, under section seven, that's where you've, um, and the draft ordinance continued the, uh, it, it, at least as far as the draft goes, continues the, um, uh, existing emergency provisions for temporary use permits. So, um, basically it's just extending it out for another sixty days, uh, what we have in place now. Uh, and those two requirements are all temporary use permits for events and activities taking place between October twenty-second and December twenty-second are repealed. Uh, I, I don't believe we have any permitted. I, I've had this one for a while, but we, uh, had set it aside. Um, because, uh, for pretty much all the time since we received it, these, uh, provisions have been in place. Um, and the second one is the zoning administrator shall not issue any new temporary use permits for events or activities taking place between those same dates. So if, if council is, is wanting to allow, uh, temporary use permits, and again, when you do it, you're not just doing it for one, you're amending the ordinance to allow, you know, any temporary use permit, uh, to apply. Um, so I mean, that's something you may, you may want to take into consideration. You know, you may be happy with the protocols put in place for this one. You know, others may come in and you may not like those as well. But, you know, when we open the door, the door is open, uh, for other types of, uh, events and activities. And then I think the other thing we would have to go in and revise, um, when we looked at the, draft ordinance last time back in August, the language that was in, um, the time governor's executive order, um, fifty, and what council decided to do, uh, was basically to, to maintain, uh, the prohibition of group congregations with more than ten people. Um, so I think if you're going to allow, you know, a large type activity, um, you know, like this or other types of activities to take place, then we, uh, then we would need to go and, and basically just pull that provision out. Um, I think, and just go with, um, what the governor has in, in the current executive order. Um, so I, I think if you wanted to allow, uh, those types of activities, we would need to amend section five, uh, to remove the prohibition on group congregations with more than ten people. And then also in, uh, section seven, uh, to, uh, once again, allow the issuance of temporary use permits.
Oh, for example, if I followed your, your, your logic there, Joe, and I think I did, the Billfish tournament, people can come back and say, hey, we've resubmitted our protocols, which you didn't like before. Please take another look.
We had one of our, one of our emergency ordinances during the spring or early summer. We had, council had approved amending the provision to say that, uh, the zoning administrator could issue, uh, temporary use permits, and I forget the exact language, but it was as long as, you know, protections were put in place and social distancing was required and whatnot. And while that ordinance was into effect, we had received one application. And that application ended up getting denied by council. So when the ordinance was last updated in, um, uh, in August, we, we basically just took that out and said, okay, we're just going to go back and, um, not allow temporary use permits. Um, really based on the fact that the only one that had been submitted, uh, council was not comfortable with, you know, the group congregations and the activity. And, you know, that one up is probably even, I would say, a little less of a risk than this one. Um, you know, that one, the people were primarily going to be, uh, out on boats during the activity. Um, you know, among them, family, you know, members, friends, whatever. Um, you know, so you would never really have that large congregation, you know, before or after the event. Um, everything was going to be spaced out, you know, with the, the weigh-ins and all the other activities. The award ceremony was going to be virtual. So, uh, I mean, just comparing the two, this one seems to be more people, more interaction. Uh, and I know that was a, a concern that council had when the Billfish tournament was denied, uh, a few months ago. So, uh, but to, to answer your question, yes, if the, if the emergency ordinance is amended and we remove the prohibition on groups larger than ten, then theoretically, you know, we could start having the large groups congregating, you know, not just for temporary events, but on the beach. You know, large gatherings and those type things, um, on the beach and in other locations. And then of course, you know, potentially you may have additional, um, temporary use permits that may come in. The way the, the way the DSO is worded, um, the reason why you had to look at the, um, the Billfish one and, and why this one specifically isn't before you with a request to approve or not approve the permit is because the DSO says if a, um, uh, temporary use permit is for, I think, three days or less or under three, then it's a zoning administrator review and approval. Uh, the Billfish tournament was longer than that threshold, so that one actually had to go to council, um, for review, uh, and vote. So, you know, when you have shorter events like that, it doesn't necessarily mean that council would even see them. Um, unless you put that in the emergency ordinance, if they had to have, um, you know, some approval from council, regardless of the length of the event.
So can I ask a question? Or make a comment here? Is that the only way we can do it, Joe? Because I am not going to support removing our group limit or just totally allowing anything to start happening. If we can draft it so we're looking at this one with really strict protocols and some assurances from Pat that everything's going to be enforced, then I could think about voting for it. But we're talking about a month from now, or a couple, three weeks from now, when who knows what's going to happen with, you know, COVID and the rate, we're already hovering around a twelve, thirteen percent positivity rate. So I am not going to support this if the only way we can do it is remove those provisions from the emergency ordinance.
So it seems to me that it's, it's section five, the prohibition on groups of more than ten could be amended to accept the groups that are a result of an event that has been approved.
Yeah, I mean, you can expand the, the list of, uh, exceptions for when that would not apply. I think you have to have, have, uh, uh, a rational basis for why you would allow one group to congregate, not another.
Hey, can I interject?
Alphabetically, Paul, Pat?
Um, it, it seems to me, you know, I, I, I lived over in Kiowa for twenty years and actually was, started that town when I was a baby. Um, but it seems to me that, that you could have either an exception that, that it requires approval by council or, or requires approval from zoning or the administrator without opening up too much of a door. Uh, you could still have your regulations. I mean, even the governor's executive order, the second, the second paragraph has exceptions. And, you know, I, if I were sitting in your seat, I'd feel the same way. You, you wouldn't dare want to prove this or any event that opens up the floodgates. But if you still maintain the discretion to, to evaluate the applications and depending on the quality of the, uh, protocols, you should have a right to turn it down or pass it. I can't imagine we'd get that many of them, but that way you wouldn't lose control. But you would do, the ordinance would allow you to, to, uh, vote on an exception if it had the proper protocols.
Any other questions or comments for Joe? Hearing none? At this point, Joe, I think, uh, it would be appropriate to put together some amendment of this ordinance for members of council to have a look at.
Please.
I, I'm sorry, Skip, what did you say?
Please.
Yes. I'd like to see an amendment that there's, as Pat just outlined, that, you know, the section doesn't.
Yes.
Jerry, you just cut out. Jerry, you, you've cut out.
Cut out? I'll try again. I would support an amendment that allows an exemption under section seven for events that have been presented to council with proper safety, health and safety protocols and approved by council.
Yeah, of course I wouldn't choose the word proper. I think the importance here is that it would be, the, the, the concern is that we don't, as, as stated, we don't want to gut the prohibition on gatherings of groups of ten or more. On the other hand, if we have, if we are able to exercise oversight of a particular event so that we're controlling a particular congregation, I, I don't see that we would then be gutting section five. It, it's a, it's a question of bringing to fore, bringing to the fore that you have the ability to regulate things that, for which you have, you are exercising oversight that weighs up what the risks are for public health and safety.
And certainly when I say proper protocols, I mean, protocols that follow CDC and DHEC guidelines.
But I, I really feel that, that council needs to see something to address what, what I perceive at least as a willingness of council to allow this event to go forward. Now, if I'm misreading council, we can just stop this discussion and, um, not take up Joe's time trying to work out an amendment.
Yeah, I just pulled up the language that we had from, uh, it was the second emergency ordinance that was adopted back on May twenty-sixth. And, um, so we had kind of crafted a narrow, uh, exception where temporary use permits could be approved. Uh, and that one said the zoning administrator shall not issue any new temporary use permits, um, for events or activities, except for events that the zoning administrator determines can be held with adherence to social distancing practices and without the congregation of large groups, so as to minimize the spread of COVID nineteen within the town. Um, you know, I would say we, we could probably take something similar, uh, and then just any temporary use permit. If council wants to review and approve each one, uh, we could just substitute council for the zoning administrator. Um, but, you know, we'd probably use language substantially similar to this.
And just change the dates.
I think the trick here was that you, you are contemplating in some sense, a group of more than ten people. And that still requires that section five allow that exception.
Yeah, no, we would, we would put a, an additional sentence or clause on section five A. Um, you know, where it says this requirement shall not apply to groups while engaging in performance of their work. Or when they conflict, directly conflict with an order of the governor. And we could just add, uh, or for special events or, or for temporary, or for congregations related to temporary use permits, uh, which are duly authorized pursuant to section seven of this ordinance. And then seven would outline the process.
That works for me. Anyone else?
It works for me as long as we're approving all of them, yeah.
Skip?
Works for me.
It worked for me, but I have one other question. Um, section one, um, part C, I guess we call it, with the exemption for masks. We removed the sentence from the governor that said a person who is engaged in strenuous exercise or physical activity. So would we need to put that back in in order to make this race legitimate within the town? Or does the governor supersede what the town, no, the governor doesn't supersede it. So we would need to put that sentence.
That, that provision, if you're in section one, that's when you're, uh, inside of a business establishment. So if someone was going inside, they would certainly have to wear a mask. But, um, if they were outside of a business establishment or, um, you know, they, they wouldn't have to wear one. Uh, the, the context of that section is when, uh, inside a business or waiting in the business.
Okay. Or waiting, okay.
Anything for you, Pat?
Uh, no.
Further, Barry?
Nothing.
All right. Uh, Mr. Welch?
Yes, yes, sir.
Then, uh, council has, uh, arrived at how they want to proceed. So I believe, uh, you need not stay on the Zoom and you can go do worthwhile things with the rest of your day.
Well, I can assure you, this is the, probably the most worthwhile thing I did today. And I really appreciate the time that you guys have devoted to it and ladies. Um, it, it, it makes a, a, a big, it's a big deal for us. The marina doesn't make any money at all. In fact, we, we contribute all our staff and, and everything you see at the marina has contributed. It's just that, uh, this is a really good cause and it gives us an opportunity to show that we can put on a good race and have a safe race. And, uh, can't thank you enough for considering it.
Thank you.
What, what I would recommend we do, because, um, you know, right now we're just looking at, uh, the ordinance itself. We do have a council meeting next Tuesday. Um, you know, if we finalize that language for, uh, this emergency ordinance and get it adopted today, uh, and we put in language that says, um, temporary use permits have to go before town council. We can do that on, uh, on Tuesday of next week.
Right. And there will be time then to process the application.
Yes, I, I have held off ordering our awards and, and shirts and some of the most expensive items until you had a chance to consider it. So I'll wait till, until after your Tuesday meeting and, and then we'll pull the trigger if it's approved.
We're not too far away from the Tuesday meeting.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate your time. Any other questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
With, uh, having relieved Pat of, uh, further attendance, looking at the, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking through the markup of twenty twenty dash zero six. So without wading through every recitation in the markup, the, the first change that is proposed is an addition at section one, subparagraph A, subparagraph one, to insert the term "business establishment shall also include any event or activity which takes place on a temporary basis on or within the premises of a business establishment, including but not limited to a polling place for the conduct of elections and election-related activities." Um, the first thing that occurs to me is that I, I know that, uh, the governor is. I know that the governor's executive order 2020-63 includes an exception for persons voting and those persons who are engaged in administration of an election from a mask requirement. And I, it includes encouragement of people to wear masks. I will also point out that the recent ordinance, the ordinance recently adopted by the town of Kew, which I believe is 2020-09.1, includes that same exception. So the reason I bring it up is that in this proposed insertion, it addresses polling places, and I would suggest that, I don't, to me, I don't think it's necessary for the town to mandate the wearing of masks at the polling places. So I'm not sure that I understand any other purpose for this insertion, other than to be able to stretch the mandate to expressly include voting.
Yeah, this was kind of a follow-up to the discussion when the last ordinance was taken up, the last emergency ordinance. The governor's order applies only to state buildings. So his requirement to wear masks and the exceptions that are attached to that are only applicable to state buildings. They don't apply to local buildings, private buildings, items of that nature. The purpose of the request that we submitted to the Attorney General after that meeting was basically because the town has a pretty broad definition of a business establishment. And of course, the polling place here is at the Lake House facility. And under that broad definition from our ordinance, the Lake House is considered a business establishment. So the reason why we submitted that request to the Attorney General was because, you know, we wanted to verify that if the town did require masks within all establishments, then it would be enforceable on, you know, any activity that would be taking place in that establishment, including specifically an election. There was a lot of discussion last time, and from my recollection, kind of the consensus of council was that, you know, if we had the ability, you wanted to require the wearing of masks at the polling place. The opinion that we got back from the Attorney General's office, it did say, in their opinion, that we can have an ordinance and that the ordinance can apply to a polling place. A couple caveats with that are, the biggest one, that you can't station a peace officer or law enforcement at the polling place to verify compliance with the ordinance. And also, really, the only reason an enforcement officer could go in would be on the request of the, I think it was the majority of the poll managers can request an enforcement officer to go in, and they use the phrase several times in the advisory opinion, "To restore order." Now, what it actually means to restore order, that's, your guess is as good as mine. You know, is it restoring order as in, you know, people being required to follow the town's ordinance? Or is it restoring order if there's someone who doesn't want to wear one, and, you know, something happens, and, you know, they have to go in and respond to that? So basically, in short, you can have an ordinance, you can require that a mask be worn, but enforcement is not as clear-cut.
Thank you, Joe. I think what I want to do, because you have, essentially, from your comments, you've, to me, you've confirmed my belief that the reason this insertion is here is so that we are able to mandate the wearing of face coverings for voting. And what I would prefer to do is to poll council and find out if, in fact, with having the benefit now of the South Carolina Attorney General opinion, which, as Joe pointed out, you can read it as saying, "The municipality has the authority to mandate the wearing of masks, but the management of the polling place is up to the persons that have that responsibility." And the question then comes to mind that if someone were being disruptive because they were told that the town requires them to wear a mask, they would then be in the difficult position of trying to quell the disruption. I don't see a benefit to the town. And so I would say, I want to hear from members of council about whether or not they feel this insertion is necessary. And I will begin with the members of council in alphabetical order, as I remember it. Skip, you are first.
So we're looking at Section 1A1.
Yep. The insertion.
Yeah. The term "business establishment" shall also include, and it picks up, elections.
Yep.
There is nothing in that that, it seems to me, what we're, you know, the issue that we might be trying to address is not necessarily the wearing of masks.
Yes, it is.
But the consequence of people who decide not to, if we say, "You must." And then we get into that whole discussion you just finished with about what the poll people can do and not do to restore order, and what restore order means if, I don't think we can address all those things in this one insertion. It's just too complicated an issue for me.
The point is, I believe that this insertion has been made to support the mandatory wearing of masks at a polling place. That's why I think it's here.
It was, it was really intended to clarify what, what I think was already included in the existing ordinance, that if you are in a location that's a business establishment or waiting in line to enter a business establishment, the ordinance says you have to wear a mask. And, and so this is basically saying, you know, that does include a polling place. Now, the reason why we got the AG opinion was because there was some concern about, you know, if you require it and someone refuses to do it, you know, are you, is the net effect of that disenfranchising someone from their right to vote? So that was the basis for why we got that opinion, but.
I, I thought the opinion we got back from the AG was concentrating on what was public versus private property.
That was, that was the other question that we submitted. The primary question was, can the town require the wearing of masks at a polling place? The other follow-up question was, even if the town didn't require it, when you have a polling place that takes place on private property, can the owner of that property impose restrictions, you know, non-governmental restrictions?
No, or can the POA require it?
Yeah, that was the basis of the question. So if the town said, well, you know, "We don't want to be involved, we'll encourage it, but we're not going to mandate it," you know, if the POA came in and said, "Well, it's our building, and we're not letting anybody in who's not wearing a mask," that was basically the basis of that second question.
Okay, so this, this insertion is strictly to make sure we've defined a polling place as an establishment covered by the ordinance?
As a business establishment, yeah.
Right. Okay. I'm in favor of that. Sorry to take so long.
All right. Jerry?
I'm in favor of this language. It's my understanding that during the special election and the primaries, SPOA did require masks. And I think with us requiring masks as town ordinance, we're backing up SPOA. And everything says, "The best thing we can do to stop COVID is have people wear masks." Here, we're going to be in November.
Good. Jerry?
Waiting to vote. So I'm gung-ho in support of this.
Okay, thank you. Pat?
I voted in, at the Lake House in several elections since COVID, and they do require masks. I didn't see anybody saying they weren't going to go in without a mask, because that's their rules. They own that property. So for me, I'm confused. Why, why do we need to say it again? It sounds like it's already been said by SPOA.
Well, the.
It backs up SPOA.
The town, the, the town can mandate the wearing of masks to include while voting. It isn't necessary to do so, but the town can do that. And as I pointed out, both the governor's executive order and the ordinance that Kewa most recently adopted exempt people from mask-wearing requirements while voting or while engaged in administration of an election. So it is a choice for the town, whether they, whether the town will mandate requiring the wearing of, mandate the wearing of face coverings while voting or not.
I realize that, but I'm saying that the Lake House won't let you in unless you wear a mask.
And Pat, I'm just worried, what happens if they change their mind? I'm saying this kind of backs up SPOA. If somebody challenged SPOA, or SPOA changed their mind, here is the fallback, "No, wear a mask to stand in line and go in and vote." It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't change anything if SPOA is going to require a mask. We're just backing them up at this point.
They need backing up?
Well, I think so. If they change their mind, or anybody challenged them, saying, "I'm exercising my right to vote," they can say, "Well, it's also, it's also the law of the town. Put your mask on."
I think it's another layer of protection, I guess, is what I'm hearing from Jerry, which I fully support, that, you know, it's not only what SPOA requires, but the town requires it. Quit giving us a hard time. Put your mask on and vote.
I understand. If I, yeah, excuse me, but if I understand what the mayor is saying, both Kewa and the state have said it's up to whoever the polling place belongs to, I guess. Is that correct?
Yeah, the way the Kewa ordinance is written, and the way the governor's executive order is written, they accept from mandatory mask-wearing people who are voting or who are engaged in the administration of an election, but at the same time, they encourage those people to wear masks. So it's, it's an exception to a mandate.
And I think having that exception implies, you know, what here probably did in Kewa as well, that absent that exception, then a mask would be required when you enter one of those establishments, whether this particular sentence is in the ordinance or not. And the reason why, why I've put it in is, as we saw with the last one, it's easier to respond to something that's there in front of you in writing, and either strike it or amend it, than try to craft it on the fly, really advocating that it be in or not in. But yeah, I think even if, even if this sentence was not in the ordinance, in my opinion, the way the ordinance is crafted, it still would apply. Unless you do what Kewa did and put an exemption in place.
It just makes it really, really clear to everybody. Joe?
Jerry froze.
I said, "I think this makes it really, really clear to everybody."
Yeah, but I think we're really clear that if you're waiting in line to get into a business, you wear a mask. If you're inside, you wear a mask. So I don't know why we have to say it again.
Because what we're doing is, we're defining the SPOA, the Lake House, a private property as a business establishment for the purposes of wearing a mask. That's why it's in here.
Why don't we just do that and forget about the polling place then?
Well, really, the intent of it was the, I think the Lake House is definitely a business establishment, but when you get into the operation of the establishment, it talks about, you know, employees of the establishment and customers of the establishment. So that, you know, that becomes a little bit more gray, because the people working there, I mean, they're poll workers, but they're not employees of the POA or employees of the Lake House. So really, the intent was to say, if you wanted to require masks at a polling place, we're going to, basically, what it's saying is, even if there's some other, you know, temporary use or temporary activity taking place, that's not a part of, like, the daily operation of the Lake House, by virtue of it taking place inside the Lake House, that activity is still going to be subject to the same requirements as the Lake Houses, so. And I think the current ordinance already says that, really, the sentence is to clarify it and remove any question if council wants to require masks.
I honestly don't see any, I don't see a reason to include it. I have no idea. I mean, we've already said it, so why do we have to say it again?
If you don't see a reason to include it, what's the downside of the clarification?
No, I guess not much. It's a one-day thing, and I don't, you know, I've got heavier arguments later on, and I have to leave at 3:30. So I'll concede this one, but I'm not conceding the others.
All right, Pat, so you'll, you're saying you concede it, so you will accept the insertion?
I'll accept the insertion. I prefer not to be there, but I'm a one person, so here we are.
Barry?
I think the town has an absolute right to do this. I think redundancy and clarification is a good, at this point, because at this point, I would hope nobody would want to go in there without a mask, but you want to make sure of that. I'm in favor of this.
Okay, you support the insertion. And for me, I do not support the insertion, but my reason for not supporting the insertion is because I do not feel it's necessary for the town to mandate the wearing of masks for conduct of the election. So since my view of this insertion is that it's really in support of that, I do not support the insertion.
Can I agree with that? Can I agree with this? I want to appointing John on my screen, to the mayor on my screen. I mean, I just don't see the reason for this, but it's, you know, it's three to two, so it's fine, you know? Fine, you know?
All right, so you, you have counted correctly, Pat, and it is. Majority support the insertion, so the insertion will be included as it is presented. The next change in the marked version. Is at section one, sub paragraph B. Sub, sub paragraph four. All persons in groups of two or more unrelated individuals while sharing a vehicle, boat, golf cart. Or other mode of transportation, which is provided by the business establishment for use on the premises. Of the business establishment when separation of at least six feet between individuals cannot be maintained. That is. A face covering is required under those circumstances for all persons in groups of two or more unrelated individuals. While sharing a vehicle, boat, golf cart or other mode of transportation, which is provided by the business establishment, so. I'm not sure I know. How this came about, I believe. That the club. Had. Some protocol. Pertaining to. Use of their golf carts. Beyond that. I don't know of, of other application for this provision. Joe, do you have any, can you fill us in?
Yeah, this, this was one that Jerry had brought up at our last meeting. And she talked about there being a, a conflict between a, a couple of different sections in the ordinance. So this was really another, I guess, policy clarification type one. And really, the, the primary driver, no pun intended, of this one. Was the golf carts having unrelated individuals sharing golf carts without. Maintaining or having the ability to maintain. Social distancing. But in drafting it, I figured, well, I mean, there, there may be. Other modes of transportation, which may be provided, which, you know, you may have a similar situation. So in drafting it, I included the term vehicle, boat, golf cart or other mode of transportation. Really, the, the key factors on here is that it has to be provided by the establishment. For use on the premises of the establishment. So if you are driving your private vehicle with an unrelated person and going and parking at the club. You don't have to wear a mask. But if you are taking a golf cart that's being provided for, by the club. For use on the club's property. Then a mask would be required. If you're not able to maintain six foot separation while you're in that cart. So it's a, a clarification, but ultimately it's a, a policy decision, whether you would like to insert that or not.
Thank you, Joe, I believe. That Marina has a, the business that. Takes people out on a boat. And I don't know what they call that, maybe they're dolphin watching tours or something. So I would understand this provision would apply to people who are on the boat. That are unable to maintain six feet of separation. Is that, is that your understanding?
That's correct, now, I mean, once they leave the town and they go out on the boat, that, you know, our jurisdiction would end, but. You know, if they're on the boat and they're anchored at the marina or something. Then yes, they would be on a boat provided by the establishment. And on the premise of the establishment, so that would be required at, at that particular point.
Okay, so with that understanding. I will again poll the members to find out whether or not they support this insertion, and I will begin with you, Mr. Crane.
Yeah, I support that.
Jerry, I think it's up to you next.
I, I was the one that brought up the ambiguity in our ordinance after. The club was unclear if they could require. People to wear masks and golf carts when they, when folks were unrelated. So this is Joe's language, though, this is not mine, so. I don't see any problem with this language, it certainly clears up that ambiguity and, and allows the, the club to cite. Town law. It doesn't, for me, fix the problem. Again, as I said earlier, I've spent hours on the CDC, DHEC and NIH sites and. Their bottom line is if you're in public and you cannot social distance, you should have a mask on, so. This gets to the golf cart, but it doesn't get to that other major thing that. The experts say over the next two months is going to be so important and, you know, actually, they say we're going to be in a culture of mask wearing for the next six to nine months, so. It doesn't get to that, is there a group of people sitting around the fire pit? Are they on a business, they're on the premises of the club, but, you know, it should be people wearing a mask, so. I don't have any problem with this language, I just think we're not quite getting that, wear a mask in public. In here, but otherwise, I, I don't mind this language. Boat seems kind of like weird, but. I would support it the way Joe drafted it, I guess. End of comment for now.
All right, Pat?
I'm, once again, confused that the club, it's a private organization. Can't put on their big boy pants and tell people they have to wear masks in their carts. I, I don't quite understand, I mean. Walmart is totally redoing everything they've ever done. For the big, after Thanksgiving Day sales. If you go in their parking lots, they're telling people they have to wear masks. Individual companies are stepping up and doing what they need to do. Why can't the club just tell people to do this? Why do we have to put it in some kind of ordinance? I, I just, and now we're including boats, so when you get on a boat. And you're going to go out, you're going to put the mask on for three minutes and then when it goes off, off. From the dock, you can take your mask off. This is just, I feel like we're just moving into an area and we can't enforce this. I mean, let's get real, we're going to have people calling us saying they see two people on a golf cart. From their back window, I think this is just unfair, first, it's unenforceable, but frankly, the club should just say, why do we have to say it?
You do not support it.
I do not support it now.
Very good, thank you. And Barry, you're next.
Well, I, I think Pat has a, a, a valid point in terms of the club should do it. But at the same time, I do not believe that, I do believe that redundancy and clarification is a good thing, so I am supporting this.
You support it? For the record, I do not support it. I agree in principle with the points that Pat raised, I think that. If the club wants to require its patrons to wear masks. When they get in a golf cart, the club is in a good position to undertake the necessary. Questioning of the patrons to find out whether or not they're unrelated persons. Clearly, if you're in a golf cart with another person, you're not socially distanced from that person, but. You're not obliged to be mask wears for, for our people who are from your own household, so. I do not support this. And again, this results in. The approval of the. By a score of three to two. The next highlighted text. Not an addition or an amendment, it's highlighted text because we had a discussion. Where we have included in. In emergency ordinance 2020 day zero five. The mandatory wearing of masks of people on the boardwalk and, and as we had. As it had been indicated in our discussion of this topic. It would be a matter of. A, a proposed amendment. And so. What I believe I understood was that, that Pat would have. Would be offering an amendment in this regard, so I'll go right to Pat.
Well, I would like to amend all persons using Seabrook Property Owners Association beach access point, etc. Be a recommendation, I too have spent a considerable amount of time on the CDC site. Who recommends over and over, but does not require. And most importantly, if you have a CDC, any tracer, DHEC or CDC calls you and traces you. Because you contacted contracted COVID-19. They only want to know about people you've spent 15 minutes with.
So you didn't.
Now, we are crossing in a, in a, in a boardwalk outside. We are not inside, the CDC also. Even has only recommends with travel, I mean, I, I. I just don't see how this is protecting anybody, frankly, there's hardly anyone there. And it's, most people are outside, they can turn their head. Other people can wear masks, we can recommend it, but I don't see it being have to being a requirement. And I would like, I propose moving it to recommendation instead of required. That's my proposal.
Okay, Pat, so essentially, what, if you allow me to. Rephrase this somewhat, currently, we have at B.
Going up is B five.
We, we have a recitation that you would like to see eliminated from B and then.
Move to D.
Have a provision for. Encouraging wearing of face coverings, I believe.
Yeah, section two A.
I'm sorry, yeah, two A, so it would mean. That essentially, we would have to craft a recitation for two A. To accommodate the boardwalks. So it would be a deletion from here and an insertion in two A.
That's correct.
But not the exact same language, obviously.
Yeah. Okay, I lost all of you, okay, yes. Yeah, I, I guess we'd have to craft it. No, I mean. I guess I could say while using Seabrook Island Property Owners Association beach access points. Designated as boardwalks one through nine, and by the way, boardwalk eight is gone. Including. Associated wash stations, so to me, it would be a fairly simple move.
Yeah.
From, from required to encourage.
In an earlier ordinance, yes.
Yes.
It's just, it's just reverting back to the previous emergency ordinance.
Twenty twenty oh five.
That's what I'm looking at over here.
Yeah, oh five is where it was moved from encouraged to required. And what you'd now be looking at is moving it back from required to.
Very good, thank you. So having taken Pat out of turn, I will now return to Alpha Bagel Order, Skip, what do you say about the proposed change?
The proposed change is moving from section one. To section three.
Section two.
Of that one highlighted section. Section two, I'm sorry, section two?
Yep.
Section two. I'm okay with that.
All right, Jerry?
As I outlined in the email I sent everybody, I would support that move if. We move section two A one into this section. And I just will comment that yesterday evening, CDC changed their 15 minute guidance to say it's not 15 minutes continuous. It's 15 minutes intermittent over a 24 hour period before your immune system can be compromised. So you don't have to be in contact with someone for a constant 15 minutes. It's intermittent over a 24 hour period, and that came out from CDC yesterday. So again, if you look at all, everything, all those people are saying, when you're in public, if you can't social distance, wear a mask. So I think if that's the language like we use, that's already in two A one, the way Joe trained, changed it and moved it here. Then I'm happy not requiring it on a boardwalk unless you can't social distance. So if we have a super busy weekend and boardwalk one is packed. People can't social distance going back and forth, you would expect them to put their mask on, but. So I would support flipping that, so. I guess we have to do that in two different amendments, but. If there's some discussion about. Ma- about wearing your mask in public, then I can support Pat's. Move in reverting, but back to what we had in our first emergency ordinance.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I, I'm not sure I understood what you just said. The proposed amendment is to change. From mandatory wearing of masks on the boardwalk to encouraging wearing of masks on the boardwalks. That's the proposed amendment.
Right, and so can I amend that amendment by saying? As we move that language, we move section two A one into this section. So it's a two step amendment.
Joe, I'm not sure how we, it seems to me that. We have to resolve what we're doing with the amendment on the. On the floor. Before we take up a different amendment.
Officially, so what, what we're using is the, the draft that you're looking at is, I guess, the draft of record. So if you want to add or delete something. I know the first couple we talked about was just by discussion and consensus. The majority was of the opinion not to strike it, a motion, a formal motion wasn't made to strike the language. For what, what Pat just brought up, I believe that was in the form of a formal motion to. Strike the language from one B five. And to add it into section two A. I don't know if she had a statement on that motion or not. If she did, I, I didn't catch it.
Well, it, it was not presented as a motion, but let's, let's. Go through the steps of moving to make that change. Pat, if you will.
Okay, I, I moved to make that change, to move. What is in this draft, section. One, I guess, B four to section two A and make it number three.
One B five, I think.
Yeah, B five.
Is it one B five, oh, I'm sorry, one B five. To section two.
Okay, is there a second?
And I make that motion.
Is there a second? I will second. Any discussion, comments?
Now, now that you have a motion and a second, it's on the floor. Jerry had mentioned an amendment to that motion. And I believe that amendment was to do what was included in Pat's motion. But in addition, to also move the language from two A one into section one B. If, if the maker and seconder of the motion are okay with that amendment, it can be accepted as a friendly amendment. If you do not accept the amendment, then Jerry's motion would be on the floor. If there's a second, then you would dispose of her amendment first, so you could either accept her amendment or reject her amendment. If it's accepted, then that becomes what you're voting on, if it's rejected, then you go back to Pat's motion.
Okay, so. Up to the mover and seconder, they would accept the proposed amendment. they would accept the proposed amendment that has been presented by Jerry, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Pat?
At this point, no, I, I don't accept that. I, I feel that we, no, I don't accept it.
Okay, so now.
So.
If there, if there's a second to Jerry's motion, then her motion is on the table. We would dispose that before going to Pat's.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. So we are now addressing the proposed amendment to take the language from two A one and move it, that is where wearing of face coverings is encouraged and moving it to section one B, where the wearing of face coverings is required or mandatory.
Before you vote on that, the first thing you're voting on is whether to accept Jerry's. At this point, it wasn't accepted as an amendment, so it would be a substitute motion to substitute her motion in place of Pat's. So the first question you would take up is, do you want to take up Jerry's motion as a substitute for Pat's? You're not actually voting on whether to approve that motion or not. You're voting on whether you want Jerry's motion to become the main motion as a substitute for Pat's motion. And then if that passes, then you vote on Jerry's. If it doesn't, then you vote on Pat's.
It should be no surprise to anybody that I have no idea what we're doing right now.
If I followed what you said, Joe, we need to vote to approve treating Jerry's motion as a, as the next motion to be approved.
You would be voting on whether to substitute her motion in place of Pat's motion. If you say yes, then you vote on Jerry's motion. If you say no, then you would go back and vote on Pat's motion. But either way, you still have to vote on whichever motion.
Oh, no, we just, we can perfect the amendment and then I think, Joe, I, I've moved to amend Pat's motion. So we can, we vote on mine, you perfect the amendment, and if mine fails, then Pat stands as originally moved. And if mine passes, then the vote is on the amended original motion. So the, the order is always perfect the amendment and then the original amendment either as offered or as amended.
I think the net result is we're saying the same thing.
Okay. So right now, it's just a matter of we can debate moving that language or not, and, and who supports it, and then we vote on it. If it fails, it fails, and then Pat's motion is still standing.
Um, so I, we, we will, I'll poll the members and skip. What we're discussing is the proposed amendment to move the language from section two A one to section one B.
So what we have encouraged today in item one, we want to require. And up above earlier, what we were requiring, we want to now encourage. Even though there's separate, there's separate motions and amendments, and one's already been taken care of.
One's really specific and the other one's very general, but it would remove the requirement to wear a mask on the boardwalk. But if you can't social distance in public in a group, you should have your mask on. But we're taking out the specific.
Would, would it make it cleaner if you removed your amendment? You vote on Pat's motion and then you offer a separate motion to move A one?
It would make it cleaner, but if we're not going to do, if we're not going to move the language, I'm going to vote no on Pat's. So I'll vote yes on, on Pat's if we move this other language. So for me, it's hard to say vote on Pat's without knowing what's going to happen to this other language.
So the, to summarize, the, the first motion you'll be on is Jerry's motion to amend Pat's motion. So basically is, if you, if you are in favor of moving the boardwalk requirement to being encouraged, but then moving the gatherings of 10 and fewer from encouraged to required, then you would vote yes or in favor of Jerry's motion. If you are not in favor of moving the, the gatherings of 10 or fewer, but you are in favor of moving the boardwalks from required to encouraged, then you would vote against Jerry's motion. And then we would take up Pat's original motion.
Skip? Do you have any further comments or questions?
Now, sitting here just brimming with the anticipated excitement of getting onto our budget stuff. Get this going even longer, but. Let me, let me ask a general question, something that I don't know if it's in here or not. If I'm out walking, do I have to wear a mask?
No.
No.
Where is that covered?
If you're out by yourself, you don't need to wear a mask.
All right, what if Lynn and I are out walking together?
You live with her, no, you don't have to wear a mask.
Okay, where is that covered here?
I mean, that's just generally, we only are suggesting that you require it when you're in a group of people that you're not related to or don't live with, like at an event, and you cannot social distance. That and is real important in there about, and you cannot social distance.
Okay.
The, the way it's worded now, if you're with, with one or more other people, as long as it's less than 10, and you're not social distancing, so say you're walking with a neighbor. The way the ordinance is worded, it's not required, but you're encouraged to wear a mask if you and your neighbor are going to be within six feet of each other. If you accept Jerry's amendment, then it would actually become required if you and a neighbor were walking with each other and not maintaining social distance.
Satisfied, Skip?
Yes, I am.
All right.
So I'm.
Jerry, any questions, any further comments?
I don't think so.
Pat, any further comments?
No.
Barry?
I don't know if it, it, we've gotten all convoluted here, but the original ordinance was specific to the boardwalks. And now we're trying to, I guess, get around not having it on the boardwalks. My response is that the, you cannot socialize in the boardwalks. I do agree that Pat brought up a point that there's not a lot of use of the boardwalks this time of the year, not a lot. However, given our demographics on this island, given the fact that a lot of older people use the boardwalks, given the fact that you're wearing a mask to protect the other person, given the fact that the virus is spreading, given the fact is that you don't want people to get the virus, I see no reason to change the ordinance. Leaving people to wear a mask for approximately one to two minutes as a courtesy at best to walk down the boardwalk to provide some, some type of protection against your carrying the virus and giving it to someone else, I do not think is that big of a deal, and I think we should leave the ordinance as is.
Okay, so Barry, just to be clear, where we have, where we are now in this process is we can approve to move the language from section two A one to section one B or not.
Correct, I'm against that.
Okay, you, you do not support doing that?
No.
Okay, so now I will call for a vote. Because what was the proposed amendment was to move the text or the provision, I mean to say, of section two A one to section one B. All in favor of making that amendment, please? Well, I, I don't want to do this this way. I will, again, poll each member. So Skip, how do you vote?
No.
Uh, Jerry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat, how do you vote?
No.
Barry, how do you vote?
No.
And I vote no. So that proposed amendment is defeated, which means that we are now back to the amendment that was proposed. If I understand this correctly, the amendment that was proposed by Pat, which would be to move the required wearing of face masks as recited in section one B five to section two, where rather than being required, it is encouraged. It won't be the exact same text, but the effect will be that the wearing of face masks on the boardwalks will then be encouraged rather than required. So we'll, I'll just start with calling for comments. Skip, any comments on that?
No comments.
Okay, Jerry?
No comment.
Pat?
No more comments.
Barry?
No comment.
All right, so now I'll call for a vote. Skip, how do you vote on that change?
No.
Uh, Jerry?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Barry?
No.
My vote, yes, so the change is defeated. And that means that the wearing of face masks on a boardwalks will continue to be required under section one B sub five.
No, I'm not a member of council, obviously, but based on the discussion from the the temporary use permits, you may want to add an additional item under one B to require wearing face masks at all allowed gatherings from an approved temporary use permit. That includes more than 10 people. Just to put that in the ordinance as well.
I'll make a motion for that of what Joe just said.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we add a requirement for wearing face coverings to section one B to address gatherings that are approved under temporary use permits where you may have groups of, of 10 or more persons, I guess. Is that correct, Joe?
That's right.
So this would end up being item six under that?
I mean, it could be any one of them, but six is the easiest.
Oh, it's the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so Skip, any comments or questions?
None.
Jerry?
None.
Pat?
Um, just to, just to make sure that this, there's not an unintended consequence to this. This is a race, and people will be removing their masks while running. Will we be getting phone calls from people saying people are running through the neighborhood? There's four or five of them together and they don't have a mask on.
I imagine we will, and I would be happy to volunteer to take those calls.
Okay.
Yeah, when, when it's a, a group, when they leave the premises of where, you know, the actual congregation is, which in this case will be the marina, you know, then I think by the time they get to the gate, I mean, some people run faster, some run slower. They're not all going to come as one, you know, large group of people. They're going to be spread out by the time they get to the gate. So obviously, if you had a group of more than 10 people together, then I would say they would need to wear a mask. But if you have a group that's less than 10, the, the change was not made to move the, the, the requirement that they wear masks only to encourage it. So I would say that they would have to wear them while they're at the beginning and ending point where the actual gathering and, and the majority of the, the use is taking place. But not while they're out running, as long as they're running in groups of less than 10.
So Joe, I think that it would be, I don't know if you said this, but I think when you're talking about groups of, whether it's 10, under 10 or more than 10, I think that it's important to clarify that within the group, social distancing is not being practiced. That's when they need to wear the mask or gator, I think, as a gator.
Um, so will that be, will that, I'm not, okay. I wrote my little notes sort of say, but very, very short. And it said something about wearing masks gathering under temporary use permits. All right, is there going to be more language in there than just that? Or what are you proposing, Joe, as far as the language goes? Are you going to say in groups of less than 10 or?
When we get to the temporary use?
Permit, yes. No, we're, we're still on, I guess, number six. I just don't want number six to be some sort of, once again, I'm not really sure why we need number six at all. And as much as when we do a temporary permit, we're basically saying we're overriding some of the things we've already said, and we're going to allow this to happen.
Yeah, you're really going to address it in both locations because we, because section one is where we require masks. I think if we're going to require masks as a condition for receiving a temporary use permit, then we should put it in section one. And then when we get to section seven, we would just say that, you know, all temporary use permits shall comply with the mask requirements as specified in section one.
Makes sense.
But instead of having, instead of having, you know, a mask is required in all these instances, and then we require it somewhere else in section seven, it's, you know, it makes more sense just to put it where we're saying masks are required and then refer to that when we get to section seven.
Okay, would you read that to me again then, what, what it is that you said? For number six?
So it would be along the lines of all persons participating in an allowed gathering of more than 10 people. Something along the lines of which is duly authorized by a temporary use permit issued pursuant to section seven of this ordinance, while social distancing is not being practiced, something along those lines.
Okay, that, that's a lot more in, uh, that's got a lot more meat on it than I think what you first said, so, okay.
We, we've refined it over the last few minutes, so.
Okay. Okay.
Originally.
Alright. Barry, any questions, comments?
No, none.
Okay, alright. So the proposed amendment is to add a required wearing of face coverings under the circumstances that you, that persons are within a group, I believe, Joe, you said of 10 or more, that is, has been allowed pursuant to a temporary use permit, and where the members of the group are not practicing social distancing. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Alright. That being said, I will call for a vote. All in favor of that proposed amendment, please? No, no, I'm not doing that. Skip, how do you vote?
In favor.
Jerry?
Yes.
Pat?
I'll go yes.
Barry?
Yes.
They will vote yes to make it unanimous. Alright. The next proposed amendment is in Section 1, Sub C, Sub 5, in insertion, person who is obtaining or receiving, these are the exceptions, from required wearing of face covering. So it's a person who is obtaining or receiving goods or services that requires access to or visibility of the face, such as receipt of dental services, or, and the insertion is, or while participating in activity, in an activity where the wearing of a mask is not feasible, such as swimming.
Yeah, and all that is, I just didn't like the way the sentence was originally worded, where it said, if you're obtaining or receiving goods or services that requires access to or visibility of the face, such as receipt of dental services or swimming. Swimming is really not a good or service, so I drew in a comma and added, or while participating in an activity where wearing a mask is not feasible, such as swimming.
Alright, it seems to me that this is fairly straightforward. So do we have a motion to approve this amendment?
I'll vote.
It's in, it's in the draft, so you don't have to vote on it unless you wanted to.
Okay. Very good. The, it will be approved with approval of the draft as it's been amended today. Is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, because you had a motion to approve the ordinance, so you're approving the ordinance in its original draft form, and the amendments you're taking up are to modify the draft. So if you don't want to change it, you don't have to vote on it.
Okay, so we're now, the next change is in Section 2, Sub A, Sub 1. It's a text change. That is, people are encouraged to wear face covering in the following circumstances while participating in allowed gatherings. This clause has been deleted. Gatherings of 10 or fewer persons when separation of at least six feet between gathered individuals who do not occupy a common residence. That separation here, I have to refer to as social distancing, is not being practiced. So the, unfortunately, this presents a separation of the recitation concerning what the term "social distancing" refers to from the recited distance. But in any case, I guess, Joe, this is a text change that you felt overcame, it felt awkwardness in the text?
Yeah, just cleaning up the flow of the sentence, nothing, not changing any substance of it.
Alright. And then the next change you have deleted, Subparagraph 3, which had encouraged people to wear face coverings while they're being transported with another person who is not a member of the same household. Is there a reason for that deletion?
It doesn't have to be deleted. When I was working on the language, I was, you know, wanting to not, when we had the language about the golf carts and whatnot, you know, that was really going to be focused on vehicles that are provided by the establishment for use on the estab- when you have other language regarding the use of vehicles and whatnot, I was, what I was trying to do was remove the inconsistency. So when we talk about vehicles and golf carts and other things, it says, you know, in Section 1, that they have to be worn in certain situations. Here, it says that they're encouraged to be worn, so it was really, could potentially be a conflict where you have one says it does and one says it doesn't because a golf cart is technically going to be a vehicle. We just as easily could keep 3 in, and then just add a sentence that unless a mask is required pursuant to Section 1B4. Either, either one would work.
Well, I took this as being here because people may find themselves using a transport service, and of course, we have the local service provider. There are cabs, and Ubers, and Lifts. And it's, it's not a requirement, it's just an encouragement that if a person is being transported in a vehicle with someone who's not a member of the same household, they're encouraged to wear a face covering. So I didn't, you know, it seems to me innocuous enough.
Yeah. That one, if you wanted to do an amendment, I would just say to restore 2A3, and add at the end, unless the wearing of a mask is required pursuant to Section 1B4.
Do we have a motion to make that amendment?
Because otherwise, we would have a conflict between those two.
Okay.
Do you have any that Joe just presented?
I'm sorry, no one moved to make the amendment. So there is nothing to vote on. Alright.
So, excuse me, can I ask a question? Are we keeping this in here, or are we taking this out?
Right, right now, it's, right now. If you wanted to restore it, I would just recommend a motion along the lines of to restore 2A3, but add to the end of that, unless the wearing of a mask is required pursuant to Section 1B4. And that's just to remove the conflict where in 1B4, we say in certain types of vehicles, you have to wear a mask, but in 2A3, it says in vehicles, it's encouraged. So just trying to remove the conflict. You can either strike it, which is what I have in the draft, or you store it and just add that additional language at the end.
Okay. So if we, if we leave it the way it is, we don't have to do anything, we just leave it strike, right?
Right.
Okay.
No one made a motion to amend this provision. So the striking would be approved upon approval of the ordinance.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
That's correct. The next changes are in Section 3, which effectively catch up with emergency, I'm sorry, executive, the governor's executive order 2020-63, which supplants a good deal of his executive order 2020-50. And you will see on page 11 of the ordinance, the, I would say, a significant change is the elimination of capacity limitations for restaurants and bars as reflected in the striking of Subparagraph 4. Also, there were mandates in 2020-50, which are now not mandates, and you see those changes in the renumbered Subparagraphs 4, 5, 6, 7, and so forth. And the remainder is only renumbering.
So John?
Yeah.
The changing a mandate from the governor is what necessitates our changing the language in the new 4 through 7, from shall to should.
Yep.
Just to, like we're hearing what the governor is doing, yes.
Yeah, we changed it from a requirement to a recommendation.
Yep.
So Joe, I'm sorry, Skip.
No, I'm just wondering if the title of Section 3 is still consistent with that? And I guess it is. Okay, sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Joe, on number 10 there, where it, oh, yeah, I just lost it on my phone. Number 10, where it says that restaurants should send employees home, is that correct? From the governor?
Yeah, I believe that's been in there since early versions. The ones that, the ones that have a shell struck out, that means should, has been in there since the beginning. And I think that's tied to, no, I know some of the sciences changed a bit, but early on, when a lot of the restaurants and whatnot were closing, you know, there was DHEC and others were saying, you know, it's not a foodborne illness, it's not presenting a threat to the public. You know, what they may not have understood at the time, well, it may not be a threat to the public, but it's certainly a threat to other employees or the restaurant manager or whatever. But that, the same language that is, is and has been in the governor's order.
I guess that just surprises me, I didn't catch it before. Essentially saying restaurants don't have to send home an employee who has symptoms and tested positive? Wow. Just a comment, I had not caught that before in our previous ordinance, that that should be a shell, I think. But if that's what the governor's doing, shame on the governor.
That's a long list.
Yeah.
Alright. Section 4?
There was one, one other shell that was changed to a should. That's what was 19 is now 18. It's dealing with refilling beverage cups, changing that from a shell to a should.
20 reasons not to eat in a restaurant.
And that is your choice?
Yep.
Alright. Section 4, again, this is reflecting the more recent executive order of the government. Other than 2020-5050, it's 2020-63. And of course, the update for the dates concerning sales of alcoholic beverages. We're just mimicking that language, carrying it over. The next change is in Section 5, Sub F, which says this section does not apply to the conduct of official business by or meetings of any agency or department of the state of South Carolina or any political subdivision thereof to include the operation of public schools and higher education institutions in the conduct of elections and election-related activities. So what we're looking at is the emergency restrictions on gatherings and how they're defined, and the exemption, which the highlighted language in the, in the draft is in the conduct of elections and election-related activities.
Yeah, so if we, that language was taken directly from the governor's executive order. So if you wanted to require the wearing of masks at polling places, then I would strike out the highlighted text. If we were, if we were going to not require or just encourage the wearing of masks, then we could leave it as is. But I guess with the vote being to expressly require the wearing of masks, I would recommend striding, striking the text that's highlighted in yellow.
I'll make that motion to strike that language.
Okay. Is that a second, Skip?
Yes, it is.
The motion has been made and seconded to strike the highlighted language from Section 5, Sub F, and the conduct of elections and election-related activities in view of the fact that we are, by this ordinance, going to require the wearing of face coverings at, for people who are voting, or or people who are engaged in administration of an election. Do we have any comments or questions? Skip?
None.
Jerry?
None.
Pat?
Seems to only make sense, so none.
Barry?
None.
The motion is seconded, we've had the comments and questions being none. We'll call for approval of the amendment. Skip, how do you vote for? Do you approve the amendment as proposed?
In favor.
Jerry?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that makes it unanimous.
If we can circle back to 5A for a second. That's where we were going to, assuming you wanted to allow the temporary use permits, again. In the last sentence of 5A, it says this requirement shall not apply to groups of individuals while engaged in performance of their work or when provisions directly conflict with a governor's order. I would just recommend adding, so it would read, this requirement shall not apply to groups of individuals while engaged in the performance of their work or while participating in a gathering related to a special event or a temporary use, permitted temporary use or event authorized pursuant to Section 7 of this ordinance.
In other words, we said it would be okay.
As long as it's approved by council, right?
Yeah.
The temporary use permit.
Alright, do we have a motion for making that amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions concerning the proposed amendment for Section 5A? Skip?
None.
Jerry?
None.
Pat?
None.
Barry?
None.
We have a- We have a vote for approval of the proposed amendment of section 5A. Skip?
Aye.
That's a yes?
It is.
Jerry?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that makes it unanimous. The proposed amendment of section 5A as presented is approved. Jerry, do you have anything else?
We're five now.
Do you have anything else concerning this ordinance?
For section seven, we need to formally amend formally amend seven B. And in lieu of the zoning administrator, we would revert to language that we had from a previous emergency ordinance where the temporary use permit can be considered. Basically, you're looking for the COVID protocols to protect public safety and reduce transmission of the virus. Instead of the zoning administrator reviewing and issuing temporary use permit, that would be a request that would come to council. And council would have the authority to grant a temporary use permit during that timeframe as long as council believes that the request contains adequate public safety measures.
That, what, which ordinance was that, Joe? Emergency ordinance number?
Uh, let me just give you one second. I want to say it was four, but let me tell you for sure. It was 2020-02, adopted May 26th.
And what section of the ordinance was that?
Was section five. Sorry, my computer is being slow. No, sorry, it was not section five. Computer froze. Let me see if I can get it on here. Section six B.
Six B, all right. Thank you.
It would be substantially similar to six B, but not identical.
Right, so the suggestion is to amend 2020-06 at section seven B to replace the language in the draft with the language from emergency ordinance 2020-02, section six B, but substituting for the zoning administrator, uh, where it provides that the zoning administrator determines can be held with adherence to social distancing and so forth, that that would be town council determines can be held with adherence to social distancing and so forth. Is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, we know some of the won't have social distancing and they will have larger congregations, so we'd have to tweak that a little bit. With, so it would be some along the lines of with adherence to social distancing practice or the wearing of masks when social distancing is not possible. And we, I would recommend instead of just without the blanket congregation of large groups, the governor's executive order does have a cap of, I believe it's 250. So instead of just using a really undefined large group, we may just want to use 250.
Up to, is that what you're saying? Up to 250?
Yeah, I think so. But I think the exact language, you know, we could just reference what the language was. I want to say it was 50% of the capacity or 250, whichever is less.
Capacity of what is the reference to capacity with respect to?
The 50% of the location's occupancy limit as determined by the fire marshal, if applicable, or 250 persons, whichever is less.
Okay. All right. Do we, do we have a motion to make that amendment? Anyone? I'm, I'm
I'm not quite sure what
I'm sorry, Jerry, what is it?
I wasn't quite sure what, what wording is. The wording is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it would be town council may consider a request for temporary use permits for events or activities taking place between October 22nd and December 22nd. And then that if council determines that the event can be held with adherence to social distancing practices or the usage of masks will be required when social distancing cannot be maintained. And the total size of the group congregation does not exceed 50% maximum occupancy or 250 persons, whenever is less. And that the applicant would have to provide a a plan or protocols for minimizing the risk of a spread of COVID.
The beginning of your proposed recitation is town council can, did you say can consider?
May consider.
May consider approval of a temporary use permit?
That's right.
Um, Joe, the number, we've just semi-approved or whatever, something that is larger than 250, but it was, they have gotten approval from the South Carolina Department of Commerce in conjunction with DHEC. So their group is larger. So do you need some language in there that says if they get approval from the South Carolina Department of Commerce?
I thought he said 175.
No, he said 300 and he, 175 was the one type of racer, whatever that was.
I thought it was 300 plus last year and 175 this year.
170 people for the half marathon and 80 to 90 for the 5K.
Okay, then I misheard that one.
And then there's the volunteers.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. There's volunteers and other people, so I think we just, we, as a group, if we're approving, we will look at that. And that's why they went and got the approval from DHEC and the South Carolina Department of, wherever this is, of commerce, which was the requirement of the governor. If you were going to have something bigger than 250, you had to have approval.
Yeah, I think probably the easiest thing is instead of trying to spell all that out, we would just refer back to section 5C, which contains language from the governor's order. So basically, you'd be looking for, you know, a plan or other approvals that'll satisfy the governor's executive order. I'm just going to have to list them all out, right? We can just
Yeah, we just, yeah, that would be fine with me. I mean, I So are we still looking for a motion?
Yep.
Okay, well, with, that was what we just discussed, I move bring this up for vote.
In a second.
Skip, any questions or comments?
No.
Jerry?
No additional comments.
Pat?
Fine.
Barry?
Nothing.
At this point, we have a motion to amend section seven B of 2020-06 to allow for town council to consider approval of a temporary use permit and the determination to be made by town council with reference, I believe, to criteria for gatherings as set forth in section five subsection or sub paragraph D, I believe. Um, is that accurate, Joe?
C. The general restrictions are in C, and then E is where the order references clarification. But I think C, five C is the main looking at.
Five C?
Correct.
You're just referring to five C. This would be in, but this is really section seven B, right?
Yeah, and five C is really the criteria that you would use in consideration. Right.
But Joe, I thought we just covered this problem in five C. One, it's gathering shall not exceed 50% of the location's occupancy limit or 250, whichever is less. Aren't we over 250?
Yeah, that's what I thought there was some in.
Um, number four. C four, organizers, operators, owners, or host of or other parties responsible can take reasonable steps to incorporate, implement, and comply with. And that doesn't exactly say they can get a permit and get approval.
Oh, yeah, it's an E.
Is it an E?
Yeah. Organs may seek clarification regarding the application of the section or exceptions for any particular gathering. So we would just refer to five C to include any exceptions which may be permitted under five. And that should cover it.
Okay, so refer to five C to include exceptions under five E.
Right.
Does anyone recall whether Pat said they had
I made it.
Something from the Department of Commerce?
Yeah, and that's E. That's where, Joe, it's five E.
Yeah, but did Pat say they have something from the Department of Commerce?
Their proposal has that. It's in the very last paragraph about additional information.
Okay, good enough.
Anyone else find it interesting that the Department of Commerce is making health-related decisions and not the Department of Health and Environmental Control?
You know, he, he mentioned DHEC when he said that that both Commerce and DHEC, so yeah, it's kind of odd Commerce does it.
Maybe they feel like DHEC's a little busy and Commerce, and Commerce had some extra people around so they could, you know, help.
That's like, the doctor's busy, so the maintenance guy's going to perform the surgery.
Oh, I don't know. It's public servants. They know what they're doing, I guess, sort of.
I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
Yes, I had made a motion.
And it's seconded?
I'd already seconded.
Yes.
So the discussion is over, I gather. Uh, in favor, Skip?
Yes. In favor.
Jerry?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
I vote yes, that makes it unanimous. All right, so that addresses section seven B. Anything further, Joe?
No, just a couple of section references changed due to renumbering from the last ordinance.
We're still discussing ordinance 2020-06, right?
Yes.
Phil? Yes.
You missed the whole budget discussion, Skip.
So, Joe, did you say you had nothing further or?
No, I didn't have anything further.
Enter graph references that you wanted to point out changing.
No, it was just later on in the ordinance where in the previous version, the mask requirements were in section two, they're now in section one. So it was just changing the section references, nothing substantive.
Well. Okay, I believe that can I believe that concludes our consideration of such, of emergency ordinance 2020-06. May I have, we have a motion already on the floor for approval and seconded. We've now had the discussion. I will now call for approval of emergency ordinance 2020-06, as has been amended in the course of our discussion. Skip?
I approve.
Nay.
Yay.
Jerry?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
I vote yes, that makes it unanimous. So the emergency ordinance 2020-06 as amended is approved for all purposes. And that, I believe, was the end of the special call meeting, where we can now proceed to the review and discussion of the draft budget.
I am so sorry, but I have to be somewhere at 4:30.
Should we reschedule our, this budget workshop to another time? We've already been doing this for two and a half hours, so. Well, three and a half.
I'm willing, I'm willing, but you have a council meeting on Tuesday, and then the third workshop, I think, would have been scheduled for.
Thursday.
The third workshop would have been scheduled for Thursday, right, Joe?
Yeah, we have one next Thursday, the 29th. I mean, we, we can just push the items from today to the 29th and add an additional one November 5th. I mean, we're not bringing the ordinance for first reading until the 17th, so we have time built in if we need an extra date.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah.
I'm willing. Is that satisfactory to all?
Yes.
We'll defer our information discussion items to next Thursday. Add one addition for November 5th.
November 5th, okay.
One to three.
One until we're done.
Well, the next budget workshop is on October 29th, and then we'll add a budget workshop for November 5th.
Yes.
And we will take up the items that were on today's agenda for the budget workshop on the October 29th. Was there something more, Joe?
No.
No?
No.
No, all right. Having disposed of the budget workshop, I believe it would now be appropriate to, for me to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a? Oh, in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.
Bye-bye, thank you, everyone.
All of you who had fun today, there's the TSO meeting tomorrow. I'm sure it promises to be equally exciting.
Okay. All righty, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.